Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for September 15th, 2014. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance of everyone, please stand.
(inaudible) 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 Let us pray. Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for your blessings, and most of all, thank you for allowing us to live in this great county. Guide us as we make decisions that impact our county and its citizens. Watch over our children, over our elderly, and those in need. Protect our service people overseas, and protect those who protect us here at home. In your name, amen.
The first order of business is a call for a public hearing for the Rural Operating Assistance Program for the funding application for annual transportation funding. And we have Alex Allman with us from Mountain Projects. Welcome, Alex.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Alex Allman, and I have assumed Susan Anderson's role at Haywood Public Transit after she retired. I apologize for any lapse in protocol. Sorry. I'm here to request a public hearing at the October 20th Board of Commissioners meeting. The purpose of this hearing is the application for the Rural Operating Assistance Program funds that are available from North Carolina Department of Transportation. This is rural transportation funding. Within this program, the Department of Social Services will receive funding for employment transportation, and Haywood Public Transit will receive funding for elderly and disabled transportation. The application deadline is October 24th. Also, the amounts of money I included in the attachment with my request have changed as of yesterday, but I have a new copy of that.
Okay. If there's no questions of Alex, then we'll go ahead and set the public hearing for 5:30 PM, October 20th, 2014, in this room.
Thank you.
Can we move to the public comment session? We have two folks who have signed up to speak. First is Pat Carr.
Thank you, Commissioner Swanger. Good evening, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Pat Carr. I'm the chairman of the Haywood County Republican Party. Last Thursday night, the Executive Committee passed a resolution to make a request to the county commissioners. I'd like to read it to you. "The Haywood County Republican Party Executive Committee, representing 29 precincts with over 12,000 registered Republicans, respectfully requests that the Haywood County Commissioners put, one, the Haywood County 2011 neighborhood delineation tax maps; two, market factor rates for all 900-plus neighborhoods; and three, sales information for each of those neighborhoods back online for all to see, and also provide a copy of the same information to the Haywood County Republican Party. A digital copy would be preferable." And I have here to present to the Commissioners a 16-gigabyte flash drive on which it could be prepared.
Next is Eddie Cave.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'd like to thank you for giving me three minutes of your time this evening. My name is Eddie Cave. I live over in Beaver Dam, Moonee, and I want to talk to you a little bit today about the Haywood County Emergency Management Ordinance. There've been a lot of news about this ordinance. It's been in every paper, and a lot of it on the Internet. Some peoples picked it up down in Raleigh. It was on some news sources that cover all of North Carolina and all of South Carolina. It's 10 pages of, in my opinion, bureaucracy, but a couple of pages, Page 6 and 7, I'd like to touch on. It talks about the commissioners giving powers to the county manager. Now, the county manager is not elected. In addition to any other powers conferred upon the county manager by local law during a state of disaster, the county manager shall have the following powers: With authority to subdelegate all or part of these powers to the emergency management director. So now, we've got a county manager that's not been elected that's going to be, have all this power and subdelegating authorities. To take such action and give such directions to law enforcement officers and agencies as may be reasonable and necessary for the purpose of securing compliance with the provisions of this chapter and with the orders, rules, and regulations made pursuant thereto. So now, the county managers could be given directions to law enforcement officers in Haywood County. We move on down to 30, this is Chapter 31.074D. To relieve, to relieve any public official having administrative responsibilities under this chapter of such responsibilities. For willful failure to obey an order, rule, or regulation adopted pursuant of this chapter. So now, we have this same person able to relieve of their duty any public official. Would that include the sheriff? That's one question I'd like to ask. E, to direct and compel the evacuation of all or part of the population from any stricken or threatened area. To establish, now, this one here's really put up a lot of questions. To establish a system of economic controls over all resources, materials and services, including food. So now, this guy's going to have control over all the food in the county. Clothing, shelter, fuel, rents, and wages, including the administration and enforcement of any rationing, price freezing, or similar state and federal order regulation. And they've also talked a lot about removing weapons during this time of emergency. So I'm going to skip down here because I'm out of time, and I'm going to read number I. This is the one that they say can remove your guns. To perform and exercise such other functions, powers, and duties as are necessary to promote and secure the safety and protection of the civilian population, and without regard to the limitation of any existing law. That would be down there on the jet.
Thank you.
Regarding the request for Ms. Carr, does anyone have any comments on that, Kevin?
No, Pat, I'd appreciate it, a heads up on that, but that's okay. I understand that, you know, you're just doing what they ask you to do. I think we made way for our flood maps when we took that off the website. I use the flood maps every day, almost every day, for people whenever they're calling about surveys. I don't think I ever use the other maps for anything. And as a surveyor, and also, there was a public records request for this, and I think there was, there would be a fee if you want maps. That's common. As a surveyor, I pay for maps all the time from the county, and if I ask for the whole county, maps of the whole county, I would pay several hundred dollars for those maps. And I have paid several hundred dollars for maps of the county. So when I go down to the GIS office and I ask for maps, I pay for the maps because I'm a citizen and as a surveyor. So I do that all the time. I would also just say, Pat, you might want to let your party, most of them are here, I guess, that wanted you to read this, so they can hear. The purpose of the party, the Republican Party, and the Democrat Party, and Libertarian Party is to recruit and raise funds for candidates for election. It's not to be an activist group. If you want to be an activist group, go somewhere else. But the purpose of the party is to recruit and raise money for candidates. Thank you.
The information that was referred to was on the website for more than a year. The last three months of its existence, there was one hit. So there was, there was no interest in it, and you can't tie up your servers with old archaic information. You know, it would just freeze the system. And the new flood maps came out, as Kevin said, and those were very important, that they be accessed by the public, and they have been, as I understand it. So again, if any information that is, that exists is available, if you make a public records request, and it will be furnished in whatever form it exists, and then you're free to put it on any website or do anything you want to do with it. It's your information. But that's the law, and we will certainly adhere to the public records law in North Carolina. So feel free to make any request that you desire to the county manager, and he can process it for you.
Anyone like to add anything to that, that topic? Okay. The second item, Mr. Cave, regarding the Emergency Management Act. Jim, I think you've done some research on this. Would you care to?
A little bit, yes. The federal courts have held that North Carolina's Emergency Management Act found in Article 1, Chapter 166A is constitutional. They have also held that in times of emergency, the government may temporarily curtail activities that would otherwise be protected under the federal constitution. An example would be curfews. An older case on point is U.S. versus Chalk, a Fourth Circuit case which includes North Carolina, western North Carolina, all of North Carolina. Federal courts have also held that the North Carolina General Assembly has properly granted specific enabling authority to cities and counties to enact and exercise emergency authority. There are three such North Carolina cases. Many counties and cities, I would say most probably counties across the state, including Haywood County, have responded to that enabling authority by enacting such ordinances. The separation of powers principle which was mentioned has applicability to state and federal governments where there are three separate branches of government, but not to local governments. The powers of local governments come directly from the Constitution and from the General Assembly. The county manager cannot remove the sheriff, who is an independently elected constitutional officer. For counties to have emergency powers to protect the public health, safety, welfare, and property of its citizens, it must have a local emergency management ordinance under the Enabling Act of the NC General Assembly. As far as I know, the ordinance that was passed in North Carolina tracks almost verbatim the prototype that was produced by the experts in Chapel Hill and Raleigh who drafted both the enabling ordinance that the General Assembly passed and the prototype local ordinance that many, many local governments have enacted.
Yeah, I read the lengthy article authored by a lady at the Institute of Government saying basically the same things. And I think pointing out that these acts have been endorsed by presidents, Ronald Reagan and George Bush in particular, after Katrina, for example. And I believe there were some holdings that, there's some requirements that governments have, a plan to address being able to evacuate a prison, for example, in the case of an emergency.
I think there may be FEMA requirements that condition you're getting funding from the government on such things.
Right.
I'm not certain about that. I'm not an expert on that.
And the other thing is, I do know that in the absence of a emergency management ordinance, then you're not eligible for federal funds. The 2004 floods, about $10 million was expended by state and federal agencies in helping us in Haywood County recover from the floods. I've heard some people say, well, you know, neighbors should be helping neighbors. Well, unless your neighbor has a swift water rescue team in place with heavy equipment and $6 to $10 million to help you with, that ain't going to work. You know, there's certain functions that government needs to perform, so. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Thank you. We'll move to constituent concerns. Michael?
None.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Senator Jim Davis and Representative Joe Sam Queen for their bipartisan effort to get Senate Bill 3 passed, which was the J Mac bill. That, the governor, that was on the news, that the governor's signing that. And I want to thank Senator Davis and Joe Sam Queen, as well as the local, the local government initiatives that we've asked for them to put in Raleigh, and they both have done that in a bipartisan way, and I just want to thank them for their work on those issues.
Okay. Bill?
I have none.
Kurt?
I have nothing.
Okay. One thing I would mention is the Commissioners attended last, last week on 9/11, a very good presentation and remembrance of the 9/11 victims. Very fortunate, there was a Medal of Honor winner present as well, which was, was very nice. So that was a very good, very good ceremony conducted at the Clyde Fire Department. Okay. All right. Do we have any adjustment to the agenda tonight? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the September 2nd, 2014 regular meeting minutes. Are there changes to those? If not, we'll move to our tax administrator, David Francis, with refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Welcome, David.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you have the releases and refunds for the month of August, a little bit thicker on the discoveries, as you know, the tax bills. We got the tax bills out two and a half months earlier than we have in years past, and so that we have some discoveries to follow those. And also, you will see on there that our land use, we had property that came out of land use at the end of August as well, and that's reflected in this as well. So those are two of the more unusual things you'll see this month.
Okay. Any questions of David?
All right. Thank you.
No? Thank you, David. Any questions regarding the consent agenda? If not, would entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move to new business. First up is Jim Presley, our EMS director, with a request to approve a bid for an ambulance. Jim?
Good evening, gentlemen. In this year's budget, Haywood County EMS was approved for the purchase of one ALS Type 1 ambulance. We did go through the formal bid process, which was concluded late last week. A company that we have typically done business with in the past, Southeastern Specialty Vehicles, was the low bidder for, for the purchase of one Type 1 ambulance for $133,996. And I come to you today to share that information with you and request to move forward with the purchase of the ambulance.
Okay. As Jim points out, in our budget sessions this year, we had approved the purchase of a, of a generic ambulance. We now have the specifics on that, and the lowest bid was Southeastern Specialty Vehicles. Any questions of Jim? If not, would entertain a motion that the low bid from Southeastern Specialty Vehicles of $133,996 for the ambulance as described be approved?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. All right. Next is, we have Captain Jason Smiley from the Sheriff's Office with us with a resolution declaring surplus property. Welcome, Jason.
We're requesting approval of resolution declaring surplus vehicles, equipment to be sold by public auction at two locations, one Hemlock Street location and the Solid Waste Recovery Facility in Clyde.
We've had pictures attached of all of this, of these vehicles. They're...
It looks like they've been used up.
Quite, quite the collection there.
They've been there since I started working here 16 years ago. Okay. They probably hadn't moved either. And they haven't moved.
And that was after they had lived out their useful life in the U.S. military, apparently, in some cases, so. Okay. Does anyone see any issues here?
No.
Okay. If not, then I would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution declaring the various pieces of equipment as surplus and that they be sold at public auction.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is David Teague, has requested approval of a resolution seeking a moratorium on hydraulic fracturing or fracking.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Since August, the North Carolina Mining and Energy Commission has been holding public hearings around the state and gathering public comment regarding proposed fracking rules that were released in July. The General Assembly is expected to begin considering these rules early in 2015. Several Haywood County staff members have been involved in monitoring this process and gathering information, including Environmental Health Director Steve Valentine and Mark Pruitt, our Erosion and Sediment Control Director. And he's going to start off with giving you a little bit of information about the process as it relates to geology, which was his degree at Western. And then I will be glad to share this resolution with you.
Okay. Mark?
Hydraulic fracturing has a long history of use in areas in the world where high-carbon sedimentary rocks are predominant and accessible for the production of oil and gas. As a general rule, vast, stable regions of sedimentary rock usually have the highest potential for oil and gas production because they are largely unchanged in posture or content by tectonic processes. It is questionable as to what extent oil and gas production in the western North Carolina region would be safe or economically feasible. That is because the geology of our region is predominantly composed of metamorphic rock, that is to say, rocks that have been changed by heat and pressure from the time when the Appalachian Mountains were formed. Metamorphic rocks are by nature unstable. They are generally highly fractured, faulted, folded, affected by igneous intrusions, and altered in chemistry and physical state. The shallowest depth to the top of the Paleozoic sediments in Haywood County is postulated to be around 5,000 feet deep near Waterville. Geologic maps show some possibility for substantial dark shales to exist in that area. Those are the rocks that are subject to fracking. Since our region is largely untested for hydrocarbon potential, it would seem wise to proceed with reason and caution regarding the use of and the effects from horizontal drilling and hydraulic fracturing to produce oil and gas in Haywood County. To reach an acceptable comfort level that would allow hydraulic fracturing in the western mountains to take place, it would seem beneficial to have more information specific to oil and gas production in Paleozoic rocks that are overlained by thick thrust sheets of metamorphic rock, such as we have here. In my opinion, the draft resolution you have before you presents solid and reasonable considerations that justify more time to study this issue prior to the state issuing drilling permits. Therefore, technical staff recommendations are affirmative that this board should adopt the resolution before you, supporting a moratorium on hydraulic fracturing in North Carolina until the three conditions of the resolve have been fully met.
Okay. Any questions of Mark? It's a fairly short resolution, David. If you would, just go ahead and read it, then there may be some questions for you at the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
Resolution seeking moratorium on hydraulic fracturing. Whereas Haywood County is abundant in natural resources that nourish and protect our citizens and visitors, and whereas Haywood County's entire water supply originates within the county's boundaries, which creates a vested interest in protecting the purity and safety of our waterways, and whereas much of Haywood County's undeveloped land is used for agricultural purposes or publicly, or is publicly owned lands consisting of the Great Smoky Mountains National Park, the U.S. Forest Service, and North Carolina Wildlife, and whereas in North Carolina, on June 4th, 2014, Governor Pat McCrory lifted the moratorium on horizontal hydraulic fracturing, fracking, for natural gas through the Energy Modernization Act, allowing permits to be issued in early 2015. And whereas the North Carolina Mining and Energy Commission, MEC, released proposed rules for regulating fracking in July 2014, and is currently seeking public comment, and whereas Session Law 2011-276 tasked the North Carolina Department of Environmental and Natural Resources, the Department of Commerce, and the Department of Justice, in conjunction with the nonprofit Rural Advancement Foundation International, to study the issue of oil and gas exploration, specifically the use of directional and horizontal drilling and hydraulic fracturing for natural gas production, and whereas recommendations contained in that study have yet to be considered and may not be fully addressed in the proposed MEC rules, and whereas fracturing of underground geologic formations involves the use of chemicals and hazardous materials during construction, hydraulic fracturing, drilling, gas production and delivery, well maintenance, and workover operations, and there have been documented cases of water contamination near fracking sites, and whereas the proposed safeguards must be in place to protect the public and the environment, and whereas local governments should have the authority to make decisions regarding environmental health and should have the right to pass legislation restricting fracking in our county, should we so choose. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Haywood County Board of Commissioners strongly urges the state to issue a moratorium on hydraulic fracturing in any part of North Carolina, including Haywood County, until a comprehensive set of environmental, public, and consumer protection policies specific to shale gas extraction and fracking have been adopted into law based on the following. One, that recommendations presented in the joint study commissioned by Session Law 2011-276 are fully addressed in the proposed MEC rules. Two, that additional scientific evidence is gathered and considered regarding the long-term impact to health, human safety, and the environment posed by fracking. Three, hazardous chemical reporting procedures to the State Emergency Response Commission and Local Emergency Planning Council are fully developed as described in the Emergency Planning and Community Right to Know Act enacted by the U.S. Congress in 1986.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions of David?
Just a comment, you know, I'm for the fracking, although, but I am, this, and this addresses that we're going to, that we'd like for them to take a look at the environmental hazards that may be there because of water contamination, which in my, in my field of business, you know, development of property is foremost in my business and in Haywood County, really, in dividing property. And if we, if we do this right, then we won't have our water table contaminated, because if someone can't drill a well, they're not going to be able to build on the property. And then the county would be faced at running water lines throughout the county, which would be, you know, tens of millions of dollars. So if they can just take a look at the environmental hazards that this is, you know, could, that could happen, I think that would be, and that's what this addresses, is for them to step back and take a good look at what the environmental hazards are. I know I have family that live in Pennsylvania that are vehemently against fracking because they've seen the environmental problems that they've had in Pennsylvania, and I haven't really heard of other areas other than Pennsylvania that have had those type problems. So I'm not sure what they did differently, maybe, but I think we need to study that as much as we can and make sure that when we do drill, that our water table is kept pure, and that would be my comments on it, Mark.
Okay. One thing that Pennsylvania and North Carolina have in common is the spine of the Appalachian that runs through both states. So that may well have some import.
I agree with Kevin. We need more time to study, and I guess one thing that stood out with me is it takes five billion gallons of water to pump into one well. Am I right on that? I read that right? So that's, I don't know, that's changing everything, that much water. And I've got a cousin in the old business in Louisiana. I'd like to talk to him and see why he's not doing it.
Well, you simply can't risk polluting your water.
We have, you know, one of the best water sources in the world. I mean, we have it. It's all originated, it's right here in Haywood County, and water is a precious resource, and will continue to be that throughout the, I mean, in the future, and will become even more of a precious resource. So I think we, it is our, we need to protect that and protect it as much as possible, so.
And just my business. From a business standpoint, it's going to be a very valuable... From a business standpoint, it's gonna be a very valuable commodity in years to come.
Yes.
I'm gonna do look at California.
It'll be the oil one of these days.
Yeah.
If we can't do it environmentally, environmentally conscious way, it'll cut down, fracking that is, it'll cut down on the, the amount of oil we need from the Middle East, I think, too. So we need to do it responsibly, though.
Any other comments? If not, would entertain a motion that the resolution seeking a moratorium on hydraulic fracturing or fracking as presented by David Teague be approved?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to the fourth item of new business. County managers requesting approval to negotiate an agreement with the Boy Scouts of America for the use of Camp Daniel Boone by emergency management.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I am requesting approval to negotiate an agreement with the Boy Scouts for use of Camp Daniel Boone by emergency management and public safety. Camp Daniel Boone has been used historically by emergency management and public safety to stage an area for search and rescue, and we need that up in, in and around that site, and also as a training site. The reason that I'm coming before you to do this is because they presently have a need to have some construction permitted, and I'm hoping that we can work out a negotiation to waive any environmental health or other fees needed from the county in that part, and be allowed to use that property.
So it'd be a quid pro quo in exchange of them letting us use the property in exchange for forgiveness of some of the fees?
Yes.
Okay.
And I was contacted by them to try to help out. So I think this would be a real positive for, especially for EMS, when they have a lost hiker up there and things like that.
Right, that's a good staging area.
Yeah, in the Shiny Rock Wilderness, so.
Yeah. Okay, so you're not asking for any, anything other than approval to negotiate under the terms that you discussed?
To negotiate and then to prepare the, if we can reach an agreement for a fee waiver and doesn't cost any money, I would ask the ability to do that as well and sign that.
Okay. Any questions? Come in. Okay, I would entertain that motion at this time.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Ira. Okay, next we move to the Haywood Community College. Their Sawmill Drive Improvement Project. We have with us Breck Lanning, the Campus Development Director. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. The project come before you today is HCC Sawmill Drive Improvement Project. We're requesting approval of the contract to WNC paving in the amount of $400,000. That was a base bid, low bidder. The contract is contingent upon HCC will be paying the electrical infrastructure line item, which is $30,455 out of our special energy fund account. The other bits of the contract that are pertinent, 75 days for substantial completion and $250 a day liquidated damages. We're comfortable with the unit prices that we're given in the event that any unforeseen things are encountered, such as unsuitable soils, et cetera. But we are requesting to proceed with that contract, which does cover removal of existing paving, achieving suitable subgrade base for new paving, then installation of the new paving, pedestrian lighting, infrastructure and fixtures, and installation of new drainage infrastructure, and installation of new sidewalks in that area.
Okay. I tell you, that area's taken quite a beating over the years, hadn't it, with the construction and so forth?
It has. It's in a poor state of disrepair at this point.
Yeah, and you have some safety issues there on the campus as well, that the lighting should take care of. Do you believe you had a chance to take a look at the finances of this?
Yes, I have. And this, the reason he's having to bring a contract to you for approval is because this is going to be paid from with the leftover proceeds from the loan, and it was a county loan. So that's why he's here to get your approval.
Right. Okay. So it was unused, unused proceeds.
Right.
Any questions of Breck? All right. Hearing none, then would entertain a motion that the lowest bidder, WNC paving, be awarded a contract for the improvement project as described.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Patrick Smathers, the attorney representing the school board with
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, staff. I am here on behalf of the school board to address any issues or concerns you have about the declaration of the property at the Old Hazelwood School that's been occupied by the Southwestern Child Care Day, Day Center. The school board declared that surplus on the 8th of this month. Under the statute, any property that the school board determines to be unsuitable for school purposes is to be declared surplus and offered to the county as the statute reads, a fair market value or at a negotiated price. So it's really at this time, your all's decision whether you want to accept the property, want to negotiate, or just express a desire that the county has no interest in acquiring this property, or has no use for it, and then which event the school board will follow the procedure to sell the property. There has been some interest from the Southwestern Child Care Organization to keep the property, but we as the school board really not have authority to do any negotiations with them. Our only option is to declare it surplus, because it has not been used specifically for school property for some number of years. There's quite a bit of maintenance that's gonna have to be done on the building, and the board is of the opinion that instead of spending the amount of money that's required to maintain the building, that its likelihood as a use of the school will not be in anywhere in the near future.
And Southwestern's still in the facility, right?
They're still in the facility, Mr. Upton. And there has been a agreement several years ago that to, in order to entice and assist teachers in this county to locate and continue employment with the school system, that they would receive a discount on the childcare. So we, in effect, will lose that, unfortunately for our teachers, but the cost of maintaining the building is, is quite a bit. And so we, we're not in the, our school system's not in a position to continue to provide that service. So unfortunately, I think, I don't know the exact number of teachers that will have to find another home for their daycare. Ms. Hall with the Southwestern Commissioners here, she maybe can answer some questions for you, but in regard to what their plans are. But obviously, they will have the right to bid on the property or negotiate, but all our, everything we do has to be on, at public bid or negotiate bid at the right of upset. So there's no guarantee that they will continue or be able to purchase that property. So if you have questions for her, maybe she can answer them.
You know, that was part, Mark, I think you, you came up with the idea, that was our incentive back then, many years ago, to, to keep young teachers, especially those with children, in the system. So part of our incentive plan, so they wouldn't leave the county, so.
And Mr. Nolte from the school systems here also to answer any questions you may have. He could give you maybe the exact number of teachers that have been taking advantage of it. It has been declining, but in any event, the, the cost to maintain the building is just, there's no, no funds, capital to keep the building up at this point in time.
So in order, basically, you're gonna have to spend a bunch of money on it to keep running it as is. I mean, Southwest, Southwest, they're providing the daycare.
Southwestern provides the daycare.
They still, if they purchase the building, they will improve it and continue to have childcare there?
That is, that has been what we've been talking about with them. But the air conditioning system is going, needs a major upgrade and replacement, and also a new roof on the building. So that's the cost that the school system just does not have the money to pay at this point in time.
At the end of the day, it's ultimately the school board's responsibility to develop the policy as to whether or not this is worth doing or not, in their view. And apparently, that discussion and debate has been had, and they have decided that, as a matter of policy, that they prefer to dispose of the property. I hope that there's some agreement or assurance that will make it possible for this service to continue for our, for our teachers. I think it's, it's important, I think. But, but again, at the end of the day, that's not a decision for this board, in my view. It's a decision for the school board to make. Does anyone, everyone agree with that analysis?
Yes.
Does anyone have an interest? Do you think there's any county interest in owning this property?
Since we have property, we need to sell any.
Well, that, but the statute requires that we answer that question.
You've gotta answer the question, whether you want it or not. If you don't want it, we know what to do then.
I agree that we don't have any legitimate interest in it.
I'd just be interested, Ms. Hall, I mean, are you all planning on trying to stay there?
Come down if you would, stand beside Mr. Smathers.
I'm Sheila Hoyle with Southwestern Child Development Commission. We do plan to stay there. Our program has operated there for 14 years with the Haywood County Public School. It's been a wonderful project. It's been good for retention of teachers and recruitment of new teachers. It also gives about a total of 100 Haywood County young children, a high-quality childcare facility in this county. We certainly intend to, we've had good negotiations with the public schools so far. We hope to continue those and, and come upon an agreement that will make us able to, to have the building.
I hear you're correct, that 100 of our, our kids, children.
We currently have 94 children enrolled at the Hazelwood facility. Some of those are public school employees, some of those are low-income working families, some of those are parents who pay the full price of care. So it is, it does serve all children in the community.
Did you say how many teachers, children are there?
She did, she just said it serves some teachers. You don't know.
That number varies. We've had a high of as many as 55, as Mr. Smathers said. With, that number has declined a bit in, in recent years, and we've been down more in the 30s. So it really just varies as births happen with, with young families.
Yeah, I remember when we first started, we had a, a young teacher from Asheville who transferred or made application in Haywood County because she had twins. And that was the, the deciding factor for her. And I don't know if she's still with our school system or not, but that pointed out that those kinds of incentives can, can work.
I remember some of those early families, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
I just thank you for hoping to continue the service.
Well, the, what has to happen is if, if y'all decide that you do not want the property, we will, we will continue on with the, either a negotiated bid or a public auction to sell the building. And that will just depend on whether this, we've got to open it up to everyone. So whoever has an interest in it will be able to bid on it, and we'll go from there.
Pat, does the school system have any need for that facility?
Mr. Upton, of course, that's a board decision, but they have looked at the, the cost of maintaining the building, and if you, maybe Mr. Nolte has the exact cost, estimate what it costs to continue to maintain it. I think it was something like $300,000, $400,000. I mean, it's gonna cost us.
And how many classrooms? I can't remember.
I don't know.
Kindergarten building, I believe. Is that right?
Yeah. It's a, it's a sizable amount, and it, you know, the, 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 Southwestern took it over to provide daycare, and it's been a good program, but the cost to maintain the building is just, is not maintaining itself.
Okay. Well, unless I'm misreading the board, I would entertain a motion to decline to purchase the surplus real estate. That is a portion of PIN number 8605-923366, known as the Hazelwood Daycare Center at 216 Virginia Avenue in Waynesville. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time on this issue, and thank you for all your work you do for the county. I know it is a, a thankless job and often criticized, but I tell you, we all, we all appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, the seventh item of new business. I'll turn to Ira and Chip for approval of agreements to engage Rick Hudson and Dixon Hughes Goodman LLC for the wind-up business of the Haywood Hospital Authority. I guess your first, Ira?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, when the hospital sold under the asset purchase agreement, there were a lot of items that had to be done to wind up the old hospital. The former Haywood Regional Board, which is now the Haywood Health Authority, is working towards winding up the public business. However, they recognized that the remainder of the funds would be for the county business, for your business. And also in discussions and work with the Commissioners, wanted to go ahead and work through getting a good team, and this county has a vested interest, and you have a vested interest in getting a good team to go forward. They had wanted as part of the team, the Health Authority, a gentleman named Rick Hudson, who is a, was the CEO at the Wilson Hospital that Duke Life Point purchased earlier, and worked through the transition of that hospital from Wilson County to Duke Life Point. So they, he had for 30 years of experience in the hospital industry. As part of the wind-up team, there is also another group, the Dixon Hughes Goodman has, and out of, they have offices all over, including Asheville. And we are very familiar with their work because they've done a lot of audits for us. But to give a support team to make sure that the wind-up business is done well, they have a good group out of Atlanta who has professionals who have worked in hospitals and done wind-ups before. And so the county has, has an interest in that. So this is approval in looking at these agreements, which I know that Mr. Killian has reviewed and negotiated with the, discussed and negotiated with the Hospital Council. And what we're asking for tonight is not that you would sign the documents, because the Hospital Authority would do that, but that you approve the agreements, because ultimately, the monies are gonna be public monies.
Okay. Chip, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, a great deal. I think that the two engagement letters, and that's what they are, they're professional engagement letters. One for the, for this Hudson fellow, who's, he's got a company called REH Advisors LLC, engagement letter with the newly-named former, former Hospital Authority, now Haywood Health Authority, because they no longer have a hospital, an engagement for him to act as CEO to kind of oversee the winding up of their affairs, not to run a hospital. Most of the people who were there before are gone now. So someone has to step up and be responsible for this winding up. And, and certainly, the, the Duke Life Point people are required to cooperate with this process, but someone needs to oversee the, the receipts and expenditures of funds. And so we have this fellow, Mr. Hudson, who will do that. And then under his agreement and under the agreement with Dixon Hughes Goodman, they're required to work together collaboratively. Dixon Hughes will be, will be reviewing everything. The county's entitled to receive copies of every report to be, to ask questions and have them answered. The county has full access to all the information that's developed from this process. So I think that it's, I think we've developed two good engagement letters. The, the attorney for the Hospital Authority's been very cooperative, the people at Dixon Hughes have been cooperative. And of course, you heard about Mr. Hudson, he just finished doing the same thing for Wilson County. So I feel like, and I know that some of the, a couple of members of the board have been in meetings with them, and I think everybody's comfortable that this is a good way to go.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a, you know, it's a, it's a really a marriage of unique talents and qualifications that Mr. Hudson and Dixon Hughes Goodman bring to the table. And they've done this before, and they've done it with Duke, Duke Life Point Hospitals. And I think that's important. So.
And I might, I mentioned too, that one of my law partners has been through a summer wind-up on behalf of another county, and he's reviewed these documents, too, and he's, he's, he's comfortable with them as well.
Kirk, you're our go-to hospital guy. Do you have any?
Well, I'm on the board for the Haywood Health Authority, and, and we met last week and approved, not necessarily the agreements, because the agreements weren't in final form, but we approved the, the engagement of both Mr. Hudson and Dixon Hughes.
You're comfortable with?
Yes.
That? Any other? Any other comments or questions of Ira, Kirk, or?
Should we talk about, what, six months, maybe, transition or longer?
I think it'll be act, pretty active for about six months, but it could linger on in some level of activity for a year.
Most folks think it'll last about a year. It certainly has to last 90 days for the wind-up period, for the true-up period, probably more like a year. When the year mark is reached, we have to negotiate again and decide whether we want to extend it, both of them.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if not, then would request, or would entertain a motion for approval of the agreements to engage Rick Hudson and Dixon Hughes Goodman LLC for the wind-up business of the Haywood Hospital Authority as set forth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Ira.
Thank you.
Chip? Okay, we move to the eighth item, which is the appointment of one member to the Recreational Advisory Board, District Five. We conducted an interview earlier today.
Yes. We have the, I have a ballot for you.
Okay.
On the ballot will be Mr. Zeb Smathers, who is Alderman of Canton, and Ms. Lindsay Dills, who is a local person with an accounting background, and both very interested in the board. Mr. Smathers is presently on the board and is an incumbent. Now approach.
Please. I don't know if you can tell from out there, but the sound system just stopped a while ago, and I hope it doesn't interfere with the recording, but I don't think it's working at all.
I did text back which one it's on.
It appears that Mr. Smathers will be continuing on that board.
I think then we would have next an appointment to one member to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustment ETJ. It's my understanding that there's one applicant in one position.
Yes. And this, yes.
Okay.
Who lives in Clyde, lives in the appropriate district, and has experience in building and land development, and is a general contractor. He is the one applicant.
Okay. And as is our policy, the general qualifications and interviews of these individuals are conducted by the respective town. So if there's no objection, would entertain a motion that Mr. Best be appointed to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustment ETJ.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. And the last item of new business is appointment of one member to the Clyde Planning Board ETJ. That would be Mr. Robert Dolman. Same circumstances, Ira?
He's a pharmacist and says he'd like to be involved in the future of Clyde. To my knowledge, same circumstances, yes.
Again, one applicant.
One applicant.
Okay. Any questions? If not, would entertain a motion that Mr. Robert Dolman be appointed as a member of the Clyde Planning Board ETJ.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. That concludes the new business section of our agenda. Is there any other business for the board?
The only thing is, I don't know if we commented on Ms. Dills and appreciating her coming in.
Oh, we didn't, but you're, that's a good point.
To interview, she had an excellent interview, and, but as usual, our custom is, if we don't, we don't have any problems with someone returning on a board, then generally, we appoint if they've done a good job, and I'm sure she'd be an excellent candidate for some other position.
Yeah, and she was very, yeah, she was very understanding of that and very supportive of that, and I hope that she will see fit to apply in the future. Any other business? Ira? No? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, ma'am.